Everybody ready? Okay, that should be off now. Test, test, test. Oh, well, not very many. Yeah, we're still on this way. All right, ten seconds. All right, I think we got our issues straightened out. So we'll go ahead and call the order to the regular meeting, well, the public hearing and then regular meeting for the San Antonio Falls County Council for February thirteenth, six P M. And we'll start with a moment of silence. Man, I need to get a motion to approve the agenda. Anybody make a motion? Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Need to get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Scott makes the motion. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? We do not have an attorney report, so we will go ahead and move into the public hearing portion of of tonight's meeting. Wasn't, I didn't expect, we, we had, we had low turnout for the other one, but we've got a few more people here now. So I just, I'll go ahead and kind of go through the same thing went through last time, for those who are here now. Can I do this a little bit different? I'm going to do kind of a short presentation, a synopsis of what we've got, and we're going to allow a few questions on H B five eighty-one. Before we go into the actual public hearing, because public hearing is here for you to to express your opinion, not to be a Q and A session, because we put time, time constraints in. So to start with, to kind of head off at the pass, an argument that a lot of people make at the Board of Edemines is I hear a lot of times people saying sixty-four percent of the people in in the state voted for this homestead exemption, you have to do it. You have to honor what the voters said. What they forget is that while the beginning of the of the ballot measure said, shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads? Comma, and this is the important part, but which any county consolidated government municipality or local school system may opt out of. So the same sixty-four percent that said they wanted this homestead exemption said, you can opt out. So just want to kind of head that argument off at the, at the now, there's no argument there. Just because sixty-four percent of the people voted for it, that same sixty-four people said we could all adopt it. Now, the other thing I want to say is, this council has not made an official decision. The wording in the what we had to advertise was forced on us that said that we were intending to opt out. We haven't made a decision. We're just holding these public hearings to kind of protect ourselves, because if one other municipality or county on either side of us opted out, then we would need to opt out. We've got, where I think everybody in Raven has officially opted in. I believe everybody in Habersham has officially opted in. We're the, we're the one holdout right now. So. All right, so that being said, the, the debate, the reason this is an issue is if we opt out, then nothing changes. We stay at six mil. Even if we opt in, we stay at six mil. What happens is if we opt in, if we just opt in, we are subject to losing some revenue if we don't adjust our military accordingly. Now, the kicker, the little carrot on this bill is that if we opt out, then nobody on either side of us gets flossed. No county, neither county gets flossed. Now, floss would be a local option sales tax. Another penny sales tax has to be approved by the voters that would be used to offset your property taxes. So if we stay in and we get a floss, and floss actually passes, one set of numbers that we saw, saw that we could reduce our military to like two point four months. As long as we have floss money coming in from that penny sales tax. However, one of the two counties is not favorable to to sales taxes and always tends to kind of put the brakes on them. Habersham vote had a splosh go up several years ago, and it failed until the county put public safety back in. I think that was when you were in. They put public safety back in, it passed the next year. They had a T splosh a couple of years ago that failed. Whereas Raven County continues, they understand that the penny sales taxes is a tax on the tourism industry and helps offset our costs of residents. So either way, opting in is a gamble, because at first we won't see a problem, but if we don't have a T, a floss in place, we will have to adjust our military to make up the difference in what we're losing from deploying homestead exemption, because we don't have a homestead exemption right now in town. We would have to adjust our military, because we have to have a certain amount of money every year in our general fund to keep this town running. So the way that the homestead exemption tax works is it will lock your value, your starting value in at twenty twenty-four valuation. It cannot increase more than whatever the, the consumer price index is for the year each year. So a hundred thousand dollar home next year could not, there was homestead exempt and could not have a reassessed value more than a hundred and three thousand. Let's just say, just faring. We don't know exactly what that rate is every year. We're pretty sure now it is going to be tied to consumer index funds. So let's say three percent. So then in twenty twenty-six, it could be a hundred and six, it could be valued at a hundred and six thousand, and the next year a hundred and nine thousand. But it's going to follow that index wherever that index is. So you're not really going to get a tax break right away. What you end up seeing is a tax break over time, if the value of your home increases more than the consumer price index. But the consumer price index doesn't always follow inflation, or doesn't always follow inflation. So there's a lot unknown, a lot of uncertainty. But the long and short of it is, what I wanted to communicate is if we opt out, really nothing changes. We continue on as we are. If we opt in, we're taking a gamble. We're rolling the dice that the residents in each county will approve a floss and and keep it in place continually. If they do, then we get, all of us get a great tax rate. If we don't, then we have, the town would have to adjust military rates to make up for the difference. And so it kind of washes out that homestead exemption. So I, yeah, I'm pretty much done. So I was, yeah, I was going to open, let you guys ask some questions before we get into the Congress, the public hearing part.
Wouldn't it be better to, to do this after the floss had been run on?
We can't. We have to make a decision before March first.
Well, there would be no lost vote if anyone opts out in, in the county.
Or have one question that's, do you want the floss and the? You know what I'm saying?
Oh, no, this was, this was already voted on.
Not a objection with the floss, though.
No, the floss would be a separate referendum.
Right.
And from discussions we've been having, it sounds like that would probably be next year. We're going to have them this year. Because I think both counties have other, one has a T splosh, one has a splosh. They want to put on the referendum, and then they don't, you don't necessarily want to do two penny sales tax the same year. So yeah, no, we have to make a decision. We can't, we can't see what it's going to be and then decide.
All right.
We can't opt out now and then opt back in later. We can't be in now and opt out down the road. So yeah, we're kind of they're kind of putting screws to us down there in Atlanta. And the reason is, I think they want everybody to be in. But all the school systems, it seems, are opting out. Both Habersham and Raven look like they're going to opt out. Not sure if they're manufacturing, yeah, the yeah, and that's the thing, they're, they don't give the floss.
Right.
They're not eligible.
They got plenty of money.
So they, they get to, they're, that's part of the reason they're opting out is because they would be affected even more so than our town is with the loss of revenue from the home, from being locked in at only a certain inflationary amount. But they aren't eligible for the floss. They would not be part of that. So that's a lot of the reason for that.
So their opting out doesn't affect any?
Does not affect us at all. Not at all.
However, we opt out.
It affects a lot.
It affects, it affects everybody else.
Everybody else. And I know that we have a T splosh I G A with Raven County coming up this year and a splosh I G A with Habersham County this year. And if we opt out now, we might be kind of shooting ourselves in both. So, but we wanted to hear from the community. We wanted to hear, get input to see if maybe someone had a different perspective. And the count, like I said, the council has not officially made a decision, but they might tonight, because we are, we will have a discussion about this after the public hearing. And anyway, any other questions, any other?
Yes, it's a question from sort of through all this. When we voted on the amendment, it seemed pretty clear cut to me, and now I find out things are very complicated.
Yes.
Um, I'm on the Habersham side. As you say, I'm in the counties in, the school districts out. I've seen various examples of how this could play out, and the more I look at it, the more confused I am.
Welcome to the club.
What I'm trying to figure out, it sounds like maybe you all don't know right now, is bottom line, you opt in, are my property taxes, which are already pretty high, are they more likely to get higher, or are they more likely to get higher if you opt out?
It's kind of a two-sided answer on this. If we opt out and the county opts out, then your property property taxes will probably just go up like they've been going up over the past, with one exception, over the past however long you own the home. One exception is H B five eighty-one does force assessors to reassess properties no more than three years. They must do it at least every three years. So they can assess every year, every couple of years, but they've got to do it no less than every three years. So it'll be a more steady increase if it increases. If we all opt in, you won't see any change except as your property taxes increase over the, over time, they cannot exceed three percent, the value of your property cannot exceed three percent or whatever the consumer pricing rate is each year. I'm not familiar with the, that index, that, I don't, I don't know the history of it. I don't know if it's ever like exceeded three percent or gotten to ten percent or I don't, I don't know, but it's going to always be tied to whatever that index is.
Doesn't have to go up, that doesn't have to go?
It doesn't have to. The accessory, yeah, that's the most, that's the absolute most enjoyed. We also don't know if that index is locked, if that, if we're locked into that index from now on, if it'll always be the consumer price index, or if another index comes along, the Department of Revenue prefers over that, they decide that, because they're the ones that choose that, not us, not anyone. It'll be the Department, I think the Department of Revenue makes that choice. So one index that was suggested was to tie it to the property value index. Which is the same thing as what we've been doing. So no tax relief there. So it's not really tax relief as much as you're not going to get hit in the future with a huge value of revaluation that would exceed what should be very close to whatever the cost of living has been going up.
But as for making up revenue with the sales tax, does that only come into play with an opt-in or?
Yeah. Yes, you must, we must opt in in order to
Take advantage of it.
Allow, in order to be permitted to have a floss. That looks, that's actually any sales tax. What the constitutional amendment did was, previously the constitution limited us to eight cents on the dollar, sales tax in the state statewide, except for a very few exceptions. Like Atlanta and some other cases. The constitutional amendment that we all voted on in November, increased that to nine. And that's where this floss would plug in. It'd be that ninth pin on every dollar you spent. On every dollar spent in Raven County. Let me put it that way. So every dollar or Habersham. Habersham also, but Habersham right now, they'd be eight, because they're at seven right now, seventy cents on the dollar. There are a few, there are a few exceptions like some groceries aren't subject to, to sales tax. And so those have still been the same. It's a little weird, is T splosh doesn't allow you to tax gasoline.
Don't know why. And it's a transportation.
Yes, a transportation, a transportation, local option, sales tax doesn't allow you to tax gasoline. Anyway. So, yeah, yeah, it's, it's but, yeah, so this, this bill's been that's crazy. It's, it's nice, but, and, and kind of hard to understand. And we're only focusing on a very small portion of that building. So any other questions on this, any other confusion? Because, like I said, when we get into when we get into public hearing, I'd just like to hear strictly, you tell us what your opinion is, why, and then we move on and not have a question answered.
I understand that, that there's really no way currently to quantify what an opt-in means. In other words, there's no way to quantify the revenue that the town may lose from that rollback, not the rollback, but the the freezing of the homestead, the homestead category. Is that, is that still the case? Have you heard anything else?
No, I mean, there's so many variables. I mean, you can look at some history that that's going to depend on.
Yeah, I know.
What the time period is.
Watch that presentation and, and when he was pushing a number that was like point four percent, which would seem to be not a very
Yeah, I think
Large risk.
We had, we had some, quite a few private conversations with different people, and one kind of one of the numbers we had for the Habersham side of town, revenue we would see from that, we could theoretically see like a loss of about five thousand dollars in the general fund. So because we have, based on how many homesteaded properties we've got in Habersham, Raven County has just a little over twice as much, so two to one ratio there. We would say we might be looking at a fifteen thousand dollar loss in revenue. General fund. What is her? Oh, man, I'm going to make her look up.
Exactly. The floss does not hold to the table.
Right, right, there's no floss.
Roughly fifteen thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, at the first, at, over a period of time, based on historical data, that quite frankly, I'm going to be honest, confused me a little bit. So I don't even know.
When do you think you'd suffer that loss of income? I mean, when would it be relevant, evident to you?
I think it'll start being evident to us three to four years down the road.
Three or four years?
Yeah. I think that's when you start seeing it, because if we don't increase, we would leave our military at six, which was bad. Which really sucks. We worked for five years to get our military back to six, and now they're kind of going to cut the legs off from unders. We we would leave it at six, and then as property values increased or decreased, we would traditionally sleep at six and just work with what we had in that range, because it's worked for us for over twenty-five years to be in that range. Well, not really much longer than that. But if we're losing, if, so the first year, we wouldn't see much change. Everybody got revalued. That's part of what a lot of complaints are, is that they jumped. I know Habersham jumped big time. I didn't really, I saw a nine percent increase over last year in value on my home. So three percent before that, the year before that, and then nine percent the year before that, so on. I saw in twenty fifteen, I saw a negative twenty-one percent decrease because the housing market.
The counties were trying to make corrections, get it up there, because they knew this bill.
They knew this bill was coming. So like that, we would see an increase to revenue the first year. Yeah, first year, you shouldn't. In twenty twenty, between twenty-two and twenty-three, my property value went up by three percent. Well, that's about the index. But then last year, my value went up by nine, or the year before that, it went up nine percent. This year, it went up nine percent. Our cost to do business kind of follows, has followed that percentage increase. So what would happen is we would lose out on possibly a six percent increase in property values on the homestead exemptions, or homesteaded properties. So by estimate, very not super educated, just pulling numbers off out of thin air, I would say that we would probably start seeing something of them. Since they have to reassess property every three years minimum, that's when we would start seeing, three years out, it would be the first time we would really see a reduction in our, in our revenue pending in front of property tax on those properties.
And again, in the meeting, they had a lot of discussion about efforts to educate the public before they have the splish.
Floss. For life, by the time we call, I think everybody's referring to this floss.
Floss, a floss, okay. Okay. So they were talking about a lot of educational efforts that they were prepared to engage in.
Yes.
And that would be not this year, the, the election would be next year.
Yeah, whenever they decide they wanna put it up for a ballot.
The county has to make that call.
Yeah, the county makes the call. We do, we just entered into an IG, well, we entered into an IGA with the county. Then the county calls for the vote.
But the, but the county has to make the call.
Right.
Um, so we can't collectively say, we want you to put it on the ballot.
I'm just wondering what you think about the, about the educational battle. They're gonna have like eighteen months to do this, right?
I hope.
Depends.
Yeah.
They're, I know they're gonna wanna get their floss on, passed on the ballot and passed before they put up another.
Right, right.
Because floss can be used for.
Bottom line is, this is gonna take some time to play out over time. It's not gonna hit tomorrow or the next day or anything like that. And everybody in Raven is opted in, everybody in Haversham's opted in, and if we opt out, they're gonna hate us for the rest of time.
Yep.
Well, yeah, yeah, we said it, there is conversation, there was some conversation about that, uh. On, 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 on another bill. Yeah, there's, there's conversation on another bill down the road that, uh, they may want, they may change that in the future. They may change it where if one enters these out, the rest of them don't have to suffer. But as of right.
False amendment?
Yeah, we would call it, I think we would label it that. But, uh, as of right now, yes. We are, we will be, yeah, we will be the rotten apple in that barrel.
So there's two sides to this. And there's kind of a monetary side over here that we've been discussing, and then there's a political side over here that we need to consider.
Which is why, why we need to have some, some thought, thought on it. You don't just say, okay, we're gonna opt in. We need to, we need to weigh everything. So it's, uh. Yeah, it, it's. Uh, I just think we're in this position. Uh, anyway, um, any, anything else? Any other questions?
So if you have an existing, uh, some sort of, um. Uh, homestead exemption prior to this situation. What would the net effect be?
That.
Would that simplify or complicate?
It would sort of depend. Haversham has a, has an existing homestead exemption. It will take precedent over this one. So any of y'all having property. Yeah, because theirs is different. Theirs froze your value. There, there's just, your value on your home is here and it stays. It doesn't increase over time and it's there. So. This is a much better, theirs is a much better homestead exemption than.
For the homeowner.
For the homeowner than the, uh, HB five eighty-one floating. So they're gonna maintain that.
Yeah.
They don't have to do anything.
Right.
They were talking about opting out. Because this would take, theirs would take precedence and we would still, we would still qualify for the floss because they already had something in place and. Crenilia has a homestead exemption. I don't know what it does, what it's like, but I don't think it would replace the floating. And I don't know if it's better. So that's the.
I think they're staying in place. So any other, from what I understand, any other homestead exemptions that. That are offered are not affected by this particularly.
So it doesn't make sense to, right now, right here enact a homestead exemption?
No, yeah, that, I, I explored that. Yeah, I explored that same thought process too and asked a bunch of questions about it and they're like. Yeah, we would have to put in place our own floating homestead exemption. And approved, approved by.
State.
The state.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't happen this year.
Right, we can't do it ourselves.
Yeah, so, uh, so that, that option was quickly taken off the table. We could opt out now. I asked this question. Can we opt out now, create, do our floating homestead exemption for the town and then opt back in or get the legislature to opt us back in? No.
But you'd still be able to take advantage of the, the, uh, floss.
No. Yeah, well, not according, not according to the language we, the language that, that we're being presented with. Because if you opt out right now, you're out. There has been some conversation about that if the legislature opts back in, then the floss becomes available. Maybe that's what you were asking.
Yeah, I think, okay, it looks like, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think if the local delegation, delegation opts us back in, if we were to opt out. Then we would be eligible for the floss. At first, when we were talking about it, the answer was no.
Right.
But that answer changed over time. So, um.
So they can tell us, no, no, you can't opt out. They can tell us, no, you can't opt out.
Well, i- i- in essence, yeah.
Yeah.
Shortcut, but we could opt out and they say, well, we're opting you back in.
You should just this often, you're in your back end.
And then there's a possibility if you, we opt in and floss gets voted for in both counties, your taxes could go down.
Oh, heck yeah.
That's the only possibility for it to go down.
And that's the important of the education.
So what do you do? Ravens generally. All taxes.
Uh, what's really funny is, um, someone from the Crenilia. Uh. City council came up to me after the meeting and said, man, you've got a really strong bargaining position right there.
Yeah.
Eh, I'm not gonna do it.
The floss passes only in Haversham. That only the Haversham houses get the tax break?
I think so.
Yeah.
So we would have to go back to having two separate millage rates. We've not been doing that lately.
More work for him.
Much more for her. Oh, man, the tax assessor's office, they're living.
Gotta track all kinds of.
Why? They gotta, they gotta track, it's called a ghost value. That's on the assessment. Then if the house sells, this is the other fun part. If the house sells. Then the, if they apply, it all starts over.
Yeah.
So that property skyrockets first year they pay their taxes.
Yeah.
Until they homestead it.
Mayor, I called the, for Haversham homesteaders, I got educated this week. When you froze it, it only froze the county. So the school board just. School board's still going for the home ready law news. Everybody else is going out. The hospital bond is higher amount. So. You know, it's only taking care of the county situations.
That's true. That is true.
So.
Um. Yeah, so. From the county's perspective. Because Board of Ed is opting out, that's the lion's share of your property tax.
No.
Not gonna see a big difference in it. Okay. My city tax for the house is around two hundred, two hundred and fifty bucks a year for a little, yeah, little house. The county value is almost six hundred a year. So. So you see the disparity between the milled rate.
Your Board of Education, by the way, this.
Yeah, for sure. So, uh. Anyway, uh, anything else? Any other? All right, let's go ahead.
Any idea what the population in terms of positive, negative on a floss vote would be? Does anybody?
Not on floss, actually not any, I don't think there's been any polling on that. All we, all we can look at is historical records. And like I said, Haversham County voters tend to shy away the first times, uh, any kind of, any sales taxes introduced. Raven County seems to understand and they tend to go through pretty easily.
Right, so, so I'd say our rate probably would pass it and Haversham would.
Okay, well.
I think it's gonna be more attractive to, to the fact that your taxes go down.
Yeah.
That's easier sell than a transportation tax.
Yeah. Yeah, all previous penny sales taxes have always been just an extra tax on you.
So it's a good chance.
This one actually reduces your.
And someone else paid for it for all visitors coming to the region. Or help pay for it.
Yeah, the Haversham side, they want you to show them the money where you have been using them in your sales tax.
Yeah.
So, and the, the floss adjustment to everything is not predictive. And by, by that, I mean, you make your adjustment to your milled rate based on how much money was collected that year from floss. So it's, it's, so we're not. Working in faith will be, we get, we know how much revenue we got this year. We reduce your property tax, milled rate to this, this year. And that's gonna shift based on how much comes in every year. Not a big deal for homeowners, but a big deal for our assessor. And our clerk trying to keep track of that. Um, so. All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearing. And, uh, like I said, the last, last meeting, we're gonna open the floor. I'm gonna work the same way. Okay? Because we were forced to advertise that we are, we have chosen to opt out. We haven't made that decision. We, we intend to opt out of, of House, House of five eighty-one. I wanna work this to say, we're gonna open the floor to those that support us opting out. Meaning you don't want the floss, you don't want the homestead exemption. Okay? So first fifteen minutes, we'll be bringing the one to speak in favor of us opting out. And I will start that timer now. We got, we got some people online saying, no, they're marking, turning this now. No one? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll close that one.
There we go.
I'm not gonna wait a whole minute.
It's gonna be a long fifteen.
No, I'm really gonna go a whole fifteen minutes. I was gonna go maybe a minute, but. I'd rather move on. All right, so now we're gonna open the floor for those who are opposed to the town opting out of HB five eighty-one, meaning you want the homestead exemption. You're in support of that and you want to be able to, for us to offer a floss, okay? So we'll start that timer now. Oh, wait before we do that. I should've said this before. If you're speaking, you need to give your name, your address, and then where you live and number, social security number. You know, just, we just. You know who you are and what your address is in town so that we can have, that is actually part of the, part of the little sun. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get, get this started with that stipulation. So anyone?
All right, starting off, you be right on one of the white school roads, a little the false story. I'm for opting in because I feel like the local sales, the floss is the fairest tax. It gives us the option to significantly lower property taxes, allows for others, not just the residents, to contribute toward that. And I feel like opting in is the best route to go because it gives us the option of floss. I believe in education. I believe in people seeing the value of it, both in Raven and Haversham. I just think it's the fairest way to go about it and people can have the biggest. I understand this again, but we never know. But I'd rather go out of hope than fear. And I see floss is a, a good thing and I would hate to have it taken off the table for voters. That's a personal opinion. Speaking as a person.
What Jimmy said.
Give your name.
David Hart, nine, six, three, Henry, not Mount Nora. Yeah, I mean, you're right, Mike. The legislature wants us to do that. It will be a pariah if we don't in the state and in our local area. And that would be a political disaster from my perspective. So I, I totally agree with him. He, he, he said it all. They want you to do this. It is a risk, but somehow. I think over time it will probably play out to our, to our advantage. So I'm for, I'm definitely for, uh, opting in since everybody else says.
Tom Jelly, two seventy-one, Hardman. I think we could, I'd get opt in primarily because that tax is paid by tourists. So I think it'd probably have a better chance of passing on, uh. How does that get, uh, what's the actual wording on that? You know, how that would, how they.
I'm Joe Winkowski. I'm at seven, seven, six, Tolu, Florida, Tennessee, Clue. And as best I understand it, I think. The city should opt in, um, and I really hope there's a strong educational effort to. It's sales tax passed and it sounds like in the long run, that, uh, that should be the way to divide somewhere the homeowners here.
Terry Dobbs, eight, eight, one, he created up Mountain Road. Um, I agree with opting in two reasons. Um, you hear so many of the people have been here for generations, burdens them on property taxes. So anyway, we can especially help the generational people. I think that's always good. And the worst case, the floss doesn't pass and those elected officials just have to look at the budget as you have to do it. Anyway, you're used to having to fine tune a budget. And then third item is we don't wanna be an island. It's like a political. And also, so I appreciate all y'all's input and your research that you're doing on this important decision, this council.
Anyone else? We got a couple online viewers that they want to speak out.
Anyone online that wants to speak? In opposition to opting out of House Bill five eighty-one.
And I'm sorry, could you hit a button? All right, I'll give this a few more moments in case someone decides they have something else to say. Right, that was a. Four, four and a half minutes. Sort of opposition opting out. So I'll go ahead and, uh, close this, that this portion of the public hearing out. And we will move on to our next. Agenda item. Um, old business. Hey, guess what? Discussion of HB five eighty-one. We've been here for two, it feels like two hours. We've been talking about HB five eighty-one. I can tell it's months. Uh. I already know, I've already heard from Craig what he feels. I don't know if he still feels the same way. We know what Jimmy's thinking. Think Scott's the same way, Mike.
I don't think there's any more discussion.
Do we need any more discussions?
I just think we need to make a motion. Is that all right?
I'll make, make a motion.
Make a motion to accept, uh, so opt in to HB, I'm still HB five eighty-one.
Okay, so. Name second. Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous. Therefore, next week's public hearing is canceled. Cause we don't need it. I was kinda hoping that'd be the case. We just had to go through the motions and, uh, just in case, but we've, like I said, we've heard from all the other local governments and they're. They've already pretty much committed to staying in. And so there's no, I don't think there's any real threat that we would, so, all right. Uh, next, I had on the agenda, I should've asked Tanya. Are you still looking into this? Have you talked to Tom?
I talked to Tom. I think first one's there because he's still gonna try to unit up there, you know, and take care of us and.
Oh, then I'm gonna make these talk.
It's not what I have to remember here, but.
All right, yeah, I think I know, I'm thinking of what he's talking about. We, we discussed that option also and, uh. Anyway, all right, so the next item is the, a quote for radios for the fire department. Um. Haversham County is switching their radio system over. We've kind of been talking about this for several years. I finally got a quote for mobile radios, which are gonna be the ones that go in the fire apparatus. The engine bumper rescue and the F one fifty. These radio, the radio system that'll be is will actually be two radios. One will be for communicating with Raven County. And the other will be for communicating with Haversham. But they'll have a single. But they'll have a single display that we, so we can, and they'll have they'll have a single display, but they'll have two separate speakers. So that we can listen and talk to either county without having, without having to switch. Right now, I have to get on the radio, except one of our trucks. I have to get on the radio and have to switch between digital and analog to talk to, if I wanna talk to Raven County. I have to go back to digital if I wanna talk to Haversham County. And when we have a gorge rescue, I have to have three radios in front of me while I'm operating command because I've gotta have Haversham, Ravens, I can't listen to both at the same time unless I have actually a physical radio present. We're working away from that a little bit, so that, that's what this should do first. Bryce, we already had talked about, uh, public safety funds. And it set us, had allocated some.
Yeah, I thought we'd allocated money already.
Toward it, yeah, I just wanted to bring this to you. So the, the net, the, uh, quoted price with installation would be eight, eight thousand three hundred and fifty six and fifty five cents per radio system, so that'd be per truck. So we'd be looking at about, would that be close to fifty, fifty thousand dollars for this purchase? So I just wanted to bring that into you and get y'all's approval or if y'all.
Well, we already, I thought we already approved the bottom storage.
I think we estimated a less, no, there's more. I think we estimated about a hundred and fifty thousand. Cause I still had to get portables and this doesn't include police, so.
So you can take that apart, we've already approved.
Yeah.
So we're just quote, yeah, we're just voting on the quotes, not the money.
Is from the company that is doing the installation work for Haversham County. And they're gonna be maintaining the system over the next fifteen years and they would maintain our radios as well, so.
So I'll make a motion, accept the quote.
So Jimmy seconds, all in favor, unanimous, alright, alright. Next item is finally, the G DUT indemnification agreement. This was brought to us back in twenty twenty two. I think this would be to put up electronic signs in the school zone telling you how fast you're going. They're been sitting in Tanya's office for three years or so. Uh, because of an indemnification clause that one was uncomfortable with. He's now decided that if it's not enforced by state law, then it doesn't matter if it's signed or not.
After three years? Took three years?
No, 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 he came to that conclusion much later. It took us a while to get G DUT to revisit.
Oh, okay.
And get us, and then issue them again, so, uh, Tanya, thanks for working on that, finally got us taken care of. I know Jimmy, I know Jimmy tried.
I've been trying and trying, thank you. I make a motion, please.
Alright, then, next on the agenda is the letter of intent with Blake Rainwater and Associates to do a begin the design build concept for the rock house. We've talked about this before. Um, they're gonna try to do it in phases, so we don't necessarily have to bid it out. Hopefully this bill that Victor, I'm pretty, I think Victor's in on. Uh, to increase that threshold to two hundred and fifty thousand, that's in the, in the legislature right now, we're considering through, that'd be nice, but as of right now, they, see if they can break it into phases for us. And with that way, they can continue, they would have the idea, so that's what this letter intends, non-binding. It's just letting them know, yes, we want to continue moving forward with this.
Let's get a motion.
Yes, a motion to accept. This letter in text, Scott makes a motion. Mike seconds, all in favor, unanimous.
Thank God, that house gonna fall down.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get those in there too. Alright, uh, I talked to Scott about this, this next item on the, on the list to replace one of the tank level, tank level monitors. We put those in about four years ago, I think we went out in twenty twenty one. So around, around this time of the year. So they've been in for four years and the other monitors doing a great job, hadn't given us, given us any trouble really whatsoever. But the one on the twenty thousand gallon tank, I think got damaged when the, uh, tank overflowed one time. So it's also closer to the normal high water level in that tank. Which can create problems with that particular monitor. They've been extremely, uh, convenient for me. Because all I have to do is go online in the morning and check and make sure we got water in the tank. And then I go and bop my day and then the evening I check again. So right now I have to drive up to the twenty thousand gallon tank and visually observe how much water's in it. Decide if I need to pump some more water in it.
You don't have to sell this one, Mike. I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Alright, hey, yeah, that's one, I may have something there.
Water's actually doing well, so.
Yeah, that's, and that's part of the reason, part of the reason. Okay, so we get the first, I got the motion, get the second, all in favor, there's unanimous.
Not that we care about the price, but not one.
It's seven, it's seven hundred or seven fifty. That's, that's the forks.
The forks.
No, the forks are different. No, 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 that's a different one, ooh. That's just a tank level monitor, we don't have the other one here. Sorry.
You need a boat?
This is the only one I had.
Okay, no, the one I had was from, uh, Schneider, this is the meter. That's the meter for overflow. Yeah, it'd be seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty for that. The other item that's in your agenda packet that kinda ties into this to prevent further damage would be the one from American Water for, what was, fifteen seventy one. Fifteen seventy one install, what it'll do is replace, right now we've got like a one inch meter and that's part of the reason we haven't, when we have an overflow, the water can reach that monitor. And it's, it's actually in the water we pour. I think I talked about that. So this two inch meter would replace that and allow more free flow so that the water level wouldn't get up to and make contact with that monitor in the future, so. Would, which I think is what damages this, so why, why can you continue damaging them?
So I know it wasn't, do we have to change? I make a motion to amend the agenda to add the American Water, uh, meters, rate of one fifty one.
I'll second that, okay, secondly, all in favor, unanimous, okay, now I need, uh, motions to adopt the, adopt the agenda as, as amended. Mike makes a motion, Scott's saying. Alright, then a motion to purchase and install.
I, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the forty eight inch, fifty five hundred pound.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I make a motion for the model.
Yeah, yeah, no, for, no, for the meter.
For the meter.
Yeah.
We have to go do the.
Alright, so, so is everything, we got everything we caught up, where we need to be. We're to the forks now. Alright, so last month y'all approved that we purchased some, uh, ice melt in very large three thousand pound bags. Before, the tractor can't handle that weight, but we really need forks for it to do that, so I was I got Linda, Linda got us a quote today from one place, uh, we can get more force if you want. But it looks like, I think, for our needs, the forty eight inch. Uh, the tractor can, can handle twenty five hundred pounds, well.
Get to forty eight, three thousand pounds.
Yeah, so I think thirty thousand would be adequate, forty eight, I don't, I've not seen pallets moving forty eight. Long, in a long time, at least it's a twelve feet or something, that's good thing. Uh, that price would be fifteen thirty.
Yeah, where do these funds come from?
I think we could pull it from public safety because it's gonna be for.
There's four public safeties.
For the icing roads.
Debris that drops.
Yeah, it'll help us with clearing roads and other things.
Does this tractor have a quick attach thing to change the?
Yes, I think it's a, it's a skid steer type.
I, I have a backing plate that I'm getting ready to send to auction up in, at K and B. You guys want it? Backing plate for two hundred bucks and you put your own, get a set of, just the forks without the backing plate and put it. Uh, it's a quick attach branded, there it is.
Okay, well, know what that would cost to get that done and get well, get them well enough?
You don't have to weld anything, if it's a quick attached plate, if it, it'll, you just drive up to it and.
No, but I'm saying the forks on that plate, how you.
Well, they, they just, they're standard, it's an industry standard thing. So you would just get a classic, uh, class A set of forks that fit, you know, it's a standard backing plate to have a sixteen inch. You know, height between the brackets and they just slide on.
Yes, we still get these forks, but he's saying you got a quick connect plate, right? And then you can attach it to the plate, which would attach to, but this kind of.
This would be the quick connect plate. Okay, my bad. So I don't know what the forks themselves would cost.
Right, I mean, if you wanna see, I mean, it, I, I can't get it out now, it'd be a, you know, a couple weeks till I get it out, but maybe it would work for you, I don't know.
I don't know, one.
I mean, can you wait, I don't know.
Yeah, we can wait.
Yeah, let's do that.
Just approve the dollar, man.
Yeah.
And then you decide whatever works best.
Okay, so we can make a motion not to pick which fork, but we'll just make a motion to approve, I'll just prove them, you gotta have tax on that.
Tax and.
Say two thousand dollars.
Yes.
That'll cover everything. Two thousand dollars.
So motion to approve, two thousand dollars, up to two thousand dollars. Alright, and Scott seconds, all in favor, unanimous.
You don't have.
Okay. And I need a motion to use public safety funds to make that. Jimmy makes a motion, Craig seconds, all in favor, unanimous, alright, just put that out of the way. Mayor's commenting way too much already tonight. I'm certainly lose my voice. I'm gonna open the floor to public comment.
AKA David Collins.
On Tuesday, I attended a board meeting, uh, within County Water and Sewer Authority. You know, they have two main projects going up in Warford Valley, they're putting water and sewer around, around, on Warford Valley Road. And that project will be completed in about ten days, but the paving, paving part of it can't be done until the climate warms up and the asphalt gets, you know, blurring.
Now, David, what size lines did they put in?
I think, now, don't, don't quote me, I think it's eight to ten inches, it's one of the two. Could be six. So, uh, yeah, um, and they have, uh, put in hook up valves for the future. You know, so that they know where they can get, uh, working the roads off of Warford Valley to hook up if, if in the future, that's what they intend to do. The, the other really major project is replacing filters in the, uh, Lake Raven plant. You know, which they've been trying to do for years and they, uh, have finally got the control room, they're wiring the control room. They're gonna start that project probably in the next couple of weeks. And that project should be completed if everything goes right by the end of March. Okay, um, and the interesting, the interesting thing that I thought, Mike, that I wanted to tell you is that uh, we've been having a lot of discussion about leak, the leaks and me, I mean, we're talking about major, major water loss on that system. Okay, and they have gone out and contracted, uh, or they're about to, with a company out of, uh, Dawsonville. That has the listening equipment and all the equipment, get to hopefully, um, allow the authority to find the major, the major leaks if they can, because it's gonna be a real mystery over the next few years. So, so, uh, we finally, um, come to terms with the fact that maybe our own people, good as they are, can't handle all of the load, so maybe we gotta do something else and, and that decision has been made. And I'm glad it's been made because I think it's gonna allow us to really, um, terminate some of the water loss. Maybe in an earlier, earlier timeframe than we were thinking. So anyway, that's, that's.
For the, everybody that's new, David represents the city with the water authority.
In River County.
It's not always that, so.
That's always had a, yeah, had a cigar and a couple of. And didn't live in two little faults, true. So, but David does and David has made it a point to make, keep us updated with what's going on with their, with their stuff. Uh, even though we don't get any, currently get any water from, from them in town. We're gonna be running the line pretty close at some point and we would like to be able to kind of do some arm twisting and see if we can't get an extension one down into town. That's, that'll be a future day, but, uh, other discussions to have. Don't let the cats out of the bag too early. Blow them out, when, when the time's up. Uh, any other public comment?
Can I have an update on the rock house? What's the intent for that?
It's still gonna be police, uh, for police park use upstairs, public, uh, use and training downstairs and then two public restrooms added on the outside.
So that will serve hopefully the future of trail.
Yeah, and, and parking behind, oh, and there's park, there's parking behind, up, up behind, so.
From what side is the parking access? From the power plant side or the?
Lake side. It's actually split and down the middle by a property line, so just kinda, kinda one of those fun. Gotta be a good neighbor, so. Any other comments? Glad to see some new faces tonight, so, did y'all buy, uh, Marion Crow's place? Y'all have the Indian Springs.
It's, uh, next door to Indian Springs, it's the brick house.
Used to be Airbnb?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, welcome to town. Yeah, back when it first went on the market, I missed it, cause I had my eye on it. And it sold before I, before I could. Yeah, in this town, if you blink sometimes, the property will sell, but that's not it. So, um, well, thanks for coming tonight, we appreciate it, appreciate y'all's. Wanting to be involved. Um, any, any other public comment? Someone online?
We talked about the future trail, are you talking about the rails for trails? Is there any update on any of that?
Not since last month.
There's some documentation you're welcome to view, look at. And it kinda puts us where we're at right now. That makes sense, probably easier to look at it than it's for us to.
Cause they were running from our backyard.
I don't think this part of the project would include that.
John, yeah, that's, this is, they should start it. The other one is the, we do have a safety corridor that we're gonna do it in town. That is a city separate from the rail strike, but it will connect up to the.
Safety corridor for when.
We just don't have any sidewalks.
We don't have sidewalks, we need to.
I don't wanna call, I wanna call the safety board.
Second is about widening that road, uh.
We don't know yet, we're still, we're still in the, uh, planning options, yeah. I supposed to have a meeting with them next week and then they thought they'd be about a month out and given us something we could look at. But you can look at it on here as well.
Alright. Any other comments, questions? Alright, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. Scott will make the motion, Mike seconds, all in favor, unanimous.
This is the relative trail, this is the safety.